How are you doing?
Good, so a spot on.
Gmail, Gmail.
I'm excited for him.
You already hired a new person.
Sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't.
Great. Well, I wonder if he's... Oh, okay.
I looked at it as I was...
Oh, I'm glad Lisa's still here. Great.
Was it about four o'clock?
Four o'clock.
Happy New Year. Did you have a good holiday?
We did. Stayed here in the quiet. Got a little bit of partying in with some family and friends, but stayed here.
Good.
I was gonna ask you, is there a new restore here?
Yeah, sometimes it does it sometimes.
It was special.
Sometimes they get two days. Ridiculous, isn't it? That's what happened last time. Like, two days later. You should have a sample.
Good. Yeah, that was a good... That's a funny little...
It just keeps dumping. I mean, it defeats the whole purpose of having these things. The reason why we have this is... It ends working.
Happy New Year.
I'm not sure yet.
Wouldn't be you?
Hi Carol.
Hi Bob, how are you? Happy New Year.
I'll tell you about September.
Hey Bob.
Now, it's never a bad cold.
Oh, you are?
Stay away from me. The audience is very clear.
Yeah, my kids... My kids...
Really? It's not good, flu?
And then there's like a cough. That lasts for like two...
And then deaths right after that, right?
What?
Then deaths right after.
It just felt like it.
I don't like sitting here scrolling. So I print it off whatever I want. I can read it online on my PC much easier than this thing. I'm not a tablet sorta girl.
I still have to fake it.
Open it up on my home. And then once you've opened it up there, you can't open it up.
You can search for it. Still, I should do a search. Like, you know, like do a search. Real rich as that could work.
What's our number here?
Three, two, one, four.
Three, two, one, four?
I still have the number. You're right, I don't care anymore.
We don't have to stop talking. We're having technical difficulties, so you guys can continue your conversations while we... Because right now they're feeling the pressure.
Now it's coming through. Did it come through? I think I just heard you. Yeah, it's an Eric Kane.
Are we good? All right, I'd like to call the January 3rd, 2013, City of Woodland Park, City Council made an order. Suzanne, would you take roll call, please?
Yes. Mayor Turley. Bravetto.
Here.
Carlson.
Here.
Harrison.
Here.
Harvey.
Here.
Schaefer.
Here.
Mayor Protem Smith.
Here.
And would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
......................................................
Before we get started on the ceremonies, Mayor Turley unfortunately is not feeling well this evening, so he could not make it and made that call, I think around four o'clock this afternoon. So I guess you're stuck with me. Okay, moving on to the first item on our agenda under ceremonies, presentations, and appointments. We have a presentation by Mr. Tom Martinez of the State of Colorado Divisional Vocational Rehabilitation to Terry Hall for Certificate of Attendance Disability Awareness Training. Mr. Martinez, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. It's a pleasure to be here. At this time, I'd like to just briefly describe what Division of Vocational Rehabilitation is. We're an organization in the state and in Taylor County and also in El Paso County. We're an organization that helps employers find qualified candidates. And our candidates are qualified candidates. We help them find opportunities. And here in Taylor County, there have been many opportunities, mostly with our swap program, which is School to Work Alliance Program. And I believe everybody knows Megan and Elizabeth with the swap program at the high school. And they work with our organization quite a bit. And we do have had many opportunities through your city for clients. But one of the other things that we do with Division of Vocational Rehabilitation is we offer employers, such as yourself as a city, disability awareness training. And we held a disability awareness training recently here at the Chamber Office. Thanks to Debbie, if Debbie's still here, I think. She let us use her facility for disability awareness training for employers. One of your employees attended, and that's Terry Hall. And what I'd like to do is give her a plaque for attending our disability awareness training because we feel it's very important that your city is aware of disability awareness training. Part of the training included, it was a two-hour training. Part of the training included disability etiquette, which is a newly formed videotape that the American Disabilities Organization here in the United States, which has a regional office here in Colorado Springs, participates in and lets us help with. And they attended this training also. So this is a certificate of attendance, disability awareness training, Tuesday, October 30th, at the U-Pass Cultural Center here in Taylor County, presented to Terry M. Hall for the City of Woodland Park. This is presented also, not just by the Division of Vocational Rehabilitation, but also by the American Disabilities Association. So congratulations, Terry. And thank you very much, City Council, for letting Terry attend. There's your plaque.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Terry, do you have anything that you wanna say or put you on the spot here?
Yeah, I was saying, am I gonna have to say anything? No, it was great training and it's great to know that there's somebody out there helping people that have disabilities. I have a little one going now, but mine's temporary. So, and Tom and his staff and the people there, they were just very knowledgeable and just caring and I think it's a great thing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Martinez, thank you for coming this evening. Moving on to our second item, Suzanne, we've got, I believe, four applicants for, I don't know how many positions, on the Historic Preservation Committee.
Thank you. So, starting with the Historical Preservation Committee, we do have currently two openings. The terms expired for incumbents Larry Black and Gary Crane. It expired on January 1st, 2013. Both Larry Black and Gary Crane are both interested in continuing on these boards. And when I did the packets, it was Gary Crane had turned his application in after I did the packet, so I've left his application on the dais for the council to see. We advertised these positions as required in the Courier, on the city's website, the Facebook page, and on Cable Channel 10. And those are the two applications that we received. Gary Crane could not be here. Mr. Black is here in the audience and available if there are any questions for him. As part of the council's policy, it requires the city clerk's office to give a report on attendance of the incumbents. And I wanted to let you know that Mr. Black was appointed to the committee on August 2nd, and there were four meetings from August through December, and Mr. Black attended all four meetings. Mr. Crane was appointed in 2000, January 20th of 2011. And during the time that he was appointed to the presence, there were nine times that he... There were nine meetings and he attended seven of those meetings. So those are the attendance records. And I am prepared to give Mr. Black his oath of office this evening if the council so desires.
Thank you. And I see we have a number of appointments to different committees.
Correct.
I didn't read far enough.
Make a motion to approve two applicants.
Second.
Okay.
May I say something about Larry? It's a thank you, Larry, for coming back on. He's our wealth of knowledge, obviously, for Woodland Park, so... I don't know what we'd do without him.
Absolutely. Now, in the past, we've done ballots, but I don't think we have to in this case, so you'll just call the...
Okay. And this is to appoint Larry Black to the Historical Reservation Committee. Bravetto.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Harvey.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Schaefer.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, and...
Crane.
Or both?
Yeah, both. You didn't mention his name, Crane.
I'm sorry, pardon me, Mr. Crane, too.
Okay.
Thank you.
I guess we're moving on to the Community Investment Fund.
Okay. There are also two terms on the Community Investment Fund expiring January 1st, 2013. And again, according to council's policies, we've advertised in the Courier, the Facebook page, website, Channel 10, etc. We mailed letters to the two incumbents, Lenny Stevenson and Darwin Nakarado. We've received an application back of interest from Mr. Nakarado. He is here in the audience this evening. He is here available for questions if the council desires. And I am also available to swear him in. And we did not hear from Lenny Stevenson, so there will still be another opening on this committee.
Are there any questions of council or would you like to hear from the applicant? From Darwin?
I got a question then.
Okay.
Darwin, you said, where are you? There you are. You said you joined the committee when it was established. When was that?
Darwin, you're gonna have to come up.
Yeah.
Name an address for the record.
I am Darwin Nakarado, 410 Craig Court, Woodland Park, Colorado. And I think the question was, is when was the Community Investment Review Committee established? I believe it was four years ago. I think 2006 was probably the first sort of quasi-meeting of it, but then it was formally established a few years after that.
Okay.
It was pretty chaotic in those days, prior to the establishment.
Well, that was my next question. You said it was chaotic.
It was, it was, there was blood all over the walls and floor in the council chamber here.
Hey, some of that was mine.
Yeah. I think I missed the one that was probably the worst, fortunately, but maybe that's why it was the worst. I'm not sure, I don't know.
Are you happy with the process now?
Yeah, I think the process works very well. It's been very orderly. And by the time the recommendations make their way to city council, it's very well organized. And I think there's very little confusion, certainly at the council level. And as a result of having the committee at all, we've been able to garner some grants from other outside agencies that we wouldn't have otherwise been able to get for community organizations. Been very effective in that regard.
Thank you.
If I could, and if it's okay, just to echo what Darwin said. And most of the staff was here, but none of you were. And the process at the time, as Darwin said, it was bloody. I can remember a couple of those meetings, and David can correct me, that got awful close to midnight with nothing but that. And I don't know whose idea it was to come up with the process, but it has made, I can assure you, it has made your life as a council person a whole lot better and a whole lot easier. And the process has actually got our name in the hat for some additional funding, one of which was the El Pumar Foundation that we wouldn't have got if we didn't have the process in place like it is now. Is that correct, David?
That is correct, yes.
So I want you to know, for the last six years, I've greatly appreciated you guys. Even though I disagree with the Community Investment Funding as a whole, I do appreciate what you guys do to bring it to council.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Councilman. I guess it was not only chaotic, but I think we had fighting among groups that was counterproductive prior to the creation of this committee and really counterproductive to the community as a whole. And I think it bordered on accomplishing your opposition to the philosophy of it in general because it was so chaotic. And I wouldn't have blamed council at all at that point. But I think Gary Crane really deserves a lot of credit for creating the committee. He was the outgoing mayor at the time, and we called it the Mayor's Community Investment Committee. He and I worked very closely together to create it and to create the guidelines for how it works. So...
And I do have to agree with you. I think that if the process hadn't have changed, I could be wrong, but I just don't see the Community Investment Program still being in place if that process hadn't have changed because of what council and the folks out there had to go through to get to the end. And now, it's like a beginning, a middle, and an end, and the process is so much better.
And there really isn't, you know, we hear a lot about the sausage making in governmental organizations and how ugly it is. That's not the case with this committee. It's a very orderly, I think Councilman Schaefer has been in on the last meeting that we had with it when we divvied up some El Pumar funds, as a matter of fact. Very organized, very logical approach and gets things done.
Do you still chair that?
We really don't have a chair, and frankly, that's one of the things that I think we should... I've sort of been the spokesman for it since its inception. But I think maybe we probably should create a formal chair, vice chair kind of a thing so that we don't play so much, we don't lean so heavily on the city clerk for doing a lot of things that the committee should do on its own.
Well, thank you, and I for one greatly appreciate it. And I can probably speak for a few staff members, so thank you very much.
Sounds like a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
To... Oh, to appoint...
Appoint Darwin Nakarado to Community Investment Review Committee.
Darwin's the only one on that one, yeah. To appoint Darwin and keep him on that committee.
Second.
John, second. Before we take a vote, I'll echo Terry's comments. I can remember the first, one of the first meetings I came to as a council member. I believe that this was one of the topics, and I can remember a lot of discussion. And the process has gotten much, much, much smoother. And appreciate your leadership and your desire to be on that committee. It's definitely brought money to our community outside of the tax dollars, the minimal tax dollars we spend. I wish we could spend more. And it's been a valuable endeavor. So thank you for being willing to serve again.
Absolutely, thank you, sir.
Suzanne?
Okay, Carlson.
Here.
Harrison. Harrison.
Yes.
Harvey.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Schaefer.
Yes.
Bravetto.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, I guess we have one more. We have two more committees, but only one more person that's come forward, and that would be for Planning Commission, so...
That's correct.
I guess Ms. Probst is looking to leave the Board of Adjustments.
That's correct.
If it works out.
There are currently three terms expiring on the Planning Commission as of January 1st, 2013. They were for Mark Stackhouse, Catherine Everett, and Larry Larson. The three incumbents were, they were contacted and they've decided not to reapply. Again, the city clerk's office has advertised in the manner that council desires us to do so. And we have received one application from citizen Marty Probst. She is here in the audience to answer any questions, and I am again available to swear her in.
Okay. Other questions for Marty?
Are there term limits for the Planning Commission?
There are. This term here for Marty is a position of three years that she's applying for. This would expire January 1st, 2016.
And Marty, you're welcome to come if there's something that you wanna say to us.
Thank you. My name is Marty Probst, and I'm at 404 Northwest Street. I've moved to this community in 1983. Have seen a lot of changes. Master Plan, I was on that. The Highway Bypass, I was on that. I'm currently the chairman for the Board of Adjustment, and I think I've been doing it for five or six years. I enjoy it, but something is in me that says maybe I need to make a change. I've thought about the planning permission off and on and just decided this might be my niche right now.
Any questions? I have a comment, but go ahead.
Yeah, no questions for Marty, but it's kinda like going from the frying pan into the fire, Marty, so be prepared and make sure you read the comprehensive plan.
Yes.
And thank you for your service on the board.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I've really enjoyed it. It's been a challenge at times.
John, did you have a question?
Under, what in your opinion are the three most pressing issues facing the City of Woodland Park relative to the Planning Commission? I cannot read your answer.
No, most people can't read my writing.
I didn't wanna say that.
No. I think there's a lot of challenges. I think growth is obviously a challenge. Not only do we need the growth, but we also need to look, do we have enough water for that growth? Financial part of it, you know, if there's no growth, there's no money. So I think the financial part of it, and I think water. I think water is a big issue.
Before we make a motion, Marty, I'd like to say thank you. I think you've done an outstanding job. I've come in front of the Board of Adjustments on a couple of different topics over the past few years, and so I've been able to watch firsthand how you've conducted those meetings and how you've acted. I think this is a natural step for you. I think you'll do great as a Planning Commissioner. And that's where, I guess, a couple of us here have served for time before we got here. And so anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I look forward to working with you as a Planning Commissioner. One other comment I would make is if water is a concern and if you have time, you know, time is always precious, but John Skank, for a period of time, came to a number of our Utility Advisory Committee meetings as a liaison with the Planning Commission. And that is something that we hold once a month, I think the second Tuesday. And somebody from the Planning Commission, well, anyone's welcome. It's a public meeting. But somebody from the Planning Commission, maybe you have interest in being that liaison or at least checking in from time to time. You might check with KIP first to make sure that it's, something's on the agenda that makes sense. But that's where you can learn a lot about our water.
I was on the board for Paint Pony Water for five years.
Well, you'd bring some valuable experience then, too, so...
Yeah. Part of the board that did the final agreement with the federal government over the contamination and setting up the system. So I do have some knowledge of working with the water.
Sounds like you have a lot of knowledge, so we'd love to see you there.
Okay.
Would somebody like to make a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make the motion to appoint Marty Probst to the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Carol.
Second.
Okay, you can pick. I think Mr. Bravetto. Be him to the punch.
No, 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 no big deal.
Okay.
Harrison.
Yes.
Harvey.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Schaefer.
Yes.
Bravetto.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. And I guess since we've lumped all these together, Suzanne, you're ready to swear the folks that are here...
I am.
......
And as the three folks come forward to the podium for Suzanne to swear you in, I'd like to ask Sally to expand a little bit on the answer about term limits on the Planning Commission.
Thank you, I'm happy to. Our Planning Commission has nine members, and they are appointed for a three-year term. So there's a rolling three every year for those appointments. They, the three-year term is not, is really just a term, not a limit. They are allowed to anti-backup and serve as long as they would like on the Planning Commission. So there's not an exact limit on the amount of years that they serve.
But they do come before council for reappointment, those three-year, after those three-year terms. That's the control or the check that you have. Suzanne?
Okay, I'm gonna do all three at the same time. So if you would be willing to state your name and say aye, raise your right hand, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
My name is... Darwin Nakarado.
Marty Probst. Thank you. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the State of Colorado.
And of the State of Colorado.
The Charter and Ordinances
The Charter and Ordinances.
Of the City of Woodland Park.
Of the City of Woodland Park.
And faithfully perform the duties
And faithfully perform the duties.
Of the Office of Member
Of the Office of Member.
Of the Historical...
Of the Community Investment Review Committee.
Correct.
And Planning Commission.
That you are about to enter.
I'm about to enter.
Okay. I can have everyone sign, and I have a copy for you and a copy for us. You need a first, sir. Have you sign right here. And then if you can sign, this copy here. You get the pretty one.
We'll give you guys mayor for this. Oh, you're very welcome. Thank you for the service.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
So you get to keep this one, and I'll keep this one.
You can.
Okay, Mr. Nakarado? You can sign. I have two copies for you to sign.
Don't tell baby.
Here, and here.
Yes, that's right. Good. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, Marty, I just need you to sign both copies. For me? Yes. Gee, now wait a minute, my packets were never that big. Sign this, and I'll give you this one.
Mr. Mayor, so my understanding is Mr. Crane has been reappointed. Thank you.
Yes.
Bye, thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Again, thank you for, to all of you, for continuing to serve. And I guess if I could make a little plug, I hope that we find two more... And I guess if I could make a little plug, I hope that we find two more applicants for the Planning Commission. It's a very important committee, or commission, that gives you an opportunity to really get into the inner workings and work with our great staff on upcoming projects. And I think with some of the things that are occurring here in our community, there's going to be some exciting things happening, so we need some folks to fill that role. And so hopefully we'll get a couple more applicants. I assume we'll continue to advertise. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Moving on to item number five on our agenda, additions, deletions, or corrections of the agenda. Do we have any, Suzanne?
We do not.
Okay. Item six is our consent calendar. We have four items on the calendar this evening. The first is to approve the minutes of the December 5th, 2012 meeting. The second is to approve the November 2012 Statement of Expenditure, expenditures and authorize the mayor to sign warrants in payment thereof. The third item is to approve application from Mini Mart Inc. doing business as Loaf and Jug for the renewal of a 3.2% beer off-premise liquor license. And the fourth is to approve an application from WKRP Colorado doing business as Pizza Hut for renewal of a 3.2% beer on-premise liquor license. Any questions of council?
I have one correction to the minutes.
Okay, John?
Unfortunately, I did not attend that meeting, and I'm given credit for offering a second to a motion in the minutes. That's at the bottom of page six. Motion to approve ordinance 1177.
Any other questions or comments on the four items?
What does it mean off-premise renewal, to point to send beer retail license?
That's when you, you don't turn it there. You buy the beer.
Oh, you just buy it there and then you can move it?
Correct, and you take it.
It's a good question.
Yep, it is.
Texas, they call it a roadie. Do we have to make a motion here to approve all this?
We do.
Make a motion to approve all of that?
Okay, we have a motion to approve and a second. Suzanne?
Harvey?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Rovetto?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Okay, we have no unfinished business on the agenda for this evening. We have one item under ordinances on initial posting. It's to approve ordinance 1178 declaring the public notification process and method for the city of Woodland Park for 2013 on initial posting, and to set the public hearing for January 17th, 2013. Suzanne?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. This was, we solicited bids on December 10th. We sent letters to the Courier and to the Colorado Springs Gazette. We only heard back from the Courier saying that they would definitely like to be our paper. We advertised, we did everything that we needed to do. And it is still the same price they've charged as of last year. It's 33 cents per line. And we would, staff would like to ask that this be approved for initial posting for public hearing.
Thank you. And for the new council members, this is something that we do every year. It's a requirement of our charter that we provide public notification. And I think every year we go out to both of the papers. And the Courier is, since I've been here, is always the one that provides the pricing, so.
The only question I had, the jackpot is not eligible because it is not a subscription paper?
That's correct. And it's the amount of circulation also.
Okay. And why do we have to do this as an ordinance? Why is this not an administrative action?
I'm looking at Erin.
Maybe Erin can answer that question, or not?
Yeah. You know, I, it's also a state statutory requirement that every jurisdiction does this at its first meeting. And it may be that the state statute requires by resolution or ordinance. I could, I'd be happy to research that and find the answer. I'm not at the top of my head, I'm not sure.
If, if it's a state statute, then we don't have to have an ordinance, correct?
The state statute may say do it by resolution or ordinance.
Okay, but if it doesn't, then we don't need to have an ordinance.
Well, yeah, I'm, I don't know the answer to that. We, I'd be happy to check and find out.
Yeah, I'm curious.
It certainly has been the practice.
Okay. Well, having asked those questions, I move that we accept it on first reading.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 1178 on initial posting and setting the public hearing date for January 17th, 2013. Suzanne?
Smith?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Rovetto?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to public hearings tonight, we have two items under public hearings. The first is to approve ordinance number 1170, amending several chapters of the municipal code related to the streamlining of public notice requirements. And I believe our Planning Director, Ms. Riley, is going to over that with us.
Yes, thank you. The purpose of this ordinance is to standardize the timelines primarily for public notice. We have three types of public notice that relates to various types of cases in our code. Typically, there's, or there is a requirement for publication in our official newspaper. And there is also requirements for posting signs on the property. And then there's a requirement for notifying adjoining property owners via letters. And so this would standardize most of those actions in order for it to be posted in the newspaper at least seven days prior to the public hearing. And then the posting of the property and the notifications by letters are consistent to be sent out or posted 10 days prior to the hearing. And might add that that would be prior to the Planning Commission hearing usually. So there's even a month in advance prior to it coming to your desk. This is something that we've been wanting to do for a long time because they have varied from as little as five days to as great as 15 days. So with this standardization, that will help our efficiency and also for the applicants. I'm happy to walk through each section. There are 13 different areas that this applies to. If you'd like for me to walk through each one in the ordinance or take questions.
Is there anyone that feels that we need to step through the different sections? If not, does anyone have questions? Carol?
Yes, I, the only thing I was, first off, I think it's a great initiative, and I think it's long overdue. But I did not understand the difference in the posting dates for, of seven days for, in some cases, and then 10 days in the case of the posting for the Planning Commission. Why did, why did you go seven days with one and 10 with another?
The, the seven days is that it will appear in the newspaper. And that's basically because we have the weekly newspaper. The, the seven days seem to be the best timeline to utilize. So it fits with our weekly newspaper publication.
So could you walk through then what your, what this new standard is? Seven, 10, 15? What are those, those milestones?
Yeah, the seven days is prior to the public hearing for Planning Commission. It will appear in the newspaper. So our newspaper comes out on Wednesday. The hearing takes place the following Thursday. So that's the publication in the newspaper. The posting for the sign, the public notice sign, will go up 10 days prior. So it will be posted probably the Friday, two Fridays before that meeting. And then the letters will also go out 10 days prior to the public hearing.
And then the 15-day requirement?
The, no, those were old timelines.
Well, the city will mail written certified notice of the hearing to the property order, owners at least 15 days prior to the hearing? So that, that remains as a requirement?
Yes, is, that's dealing with the permitted use site plan. That's a little bit different. Because a site plan, that is a permitted use. We want to ensure that there's enough time for those property owners to be able to come in and take a look at the plans if they're interested. So there's not a hearing date scheduled.
Okay, so bottom line, seven days for the public notification in the newspaper, 10 days for the physical posting of the property or the project. And then the 15 days is the notification to?
That's for the site plan review, when it's a permitted use. That does not have a public hearing associated with it.
Okay, got it.
I'm happy.
Glad you're happy.
A commotion to approve ordinance 1170.
Public hearing?
Oh, we have to. Are there any more questions?
Public comment.
Thank you, Sally. Okay, hearing none. We'll open this up for a public hearing. Is there anyone that wishes to come forward, speak on this topic? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Mr. Rovetto?
I'm motion to approve 1170.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Suzanne?
Thank you, Mayor. Rovetto?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yep.
Smith?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to our second item under public hearings this evening. Ordinance number 1180, amending the municipal code concerning possession of marijuana and related violations. And I believe that this is something that we discussed at length at the last, or at some length, I should say, at the last meeting. And Erin, I believe you're going to take the lead on this one?
Thank you, and, thank you, Mayor Protem. And just to interject, to go back to the ordinance 1178 by which the council chose the Pike's Peak Courier-View as the official place of publication, that is a charter requirement.
Okay.
It's right there in section 15.12. Does require it be done by ordinance. So if the charter ever changes, you could revise that, but right now it's a charter requirement.
See, if George would have been here, he would have known.
And he would have, and, yeah. So let me take you then to ordinance 1180, which is before counts one, second reading. Ordinance 1180 grants to the Woodland Park Municipal Court jurisdiction over juveniles charged with possession of marijuana or marijuana paraphernalia within the city of Woodland Park. The purpose of ordinance, one of the purposes of ordinance 1180 is to allow juvenile offenders to be, the benefit of having their cases resolved locally. With respect to adults, ordinance 1180 removes adult marijuana offenses from the municipal court's jurisdiction. In addition, ordinance 1180 conforms the municipal code with Colorado Constitution as amended by Amendment 64, which was passed by the voters at the last election. Finally, ordinance 1180 removes the possibility of a jail sentence from the penalties available for juvenile offenders, leaving only the possibility of a fine. And it is the recommendation that after a public hearing, you do approve ordinance 1180. And I'd be happy to take any questions. Or I believe that any of those questions have to do with exactly how those juvenile offenders work through the system, that Chief Larson is here to answer questions as well.
Yeah, you mentioned that it takes the city, the municipal court, out of adult offenses. And I would assume that if it, that adults are allowed to have at least under one ounce of marijuana. So there is still potentially to have adult offenses for those that have more than one ounce. Would that still be not under the municipal court jurisdiction then?
That's correct.
And that would be under the county jurisdiction then?
That's correct.
Okay. He says the state.
Or the state.
Or the state, okay.
It's tried in what's called the county court, but the county court is a state court. It varies with how much marijuana the person has. It might be in the district court or the county court. Might be felony, might be misdemeanor, might be a petty offense. The legislature seems to be planning to revise most of those laws to allow for the fact that one ounce is now allowing what will be the petty offense, what will be the misdemeanor, and then what will become the felony. So I'm reluctant to have us have something that isn't going to make sense in another three to six months. And also, Erin mentioned the jointer problems. If you have another offense, which is where most of our offenses with adults come from, you can't send a person to two different courts for the same criminal episode. They have to go to the one generally that has jurisdiction of the more serious offense, which usually is not going to be us.
Okay. Are there other questions?
Just a comment. I think it's a prudent approach. I just wondered if any other home rural towns have adopted similar legislate, or similar ordinance?
The stuff that I've seen through the Chiefs Association indicates that a few have. Some of them are just waiting to see what the state's going to do. Not all the cities have teen courts or have a provision in their municipal law that allows juveniles to be tried in the city court. Many cities don't do that. So it's difficult to give you a useful answer.
The other question I had is, what do you think would happen? Or do you have a recommendation for habitual offender under 18?
Well, our policy on the teen court is set up by the court. And generally speaking, the judge wants a first offender. Occasionally, the judge will accept a second offender if circumstances convince the judge it's useful. But typically, you get one shot in teen court. And if that doesn't work, then you go into the juvenile court system, which is handled in Cripple Creek at the juvenile court.
And this ordinance would not prohibit that?
No.
Thanks.
Any other questions before we open the public hearing? Okay. We'll open the public hearing for this item. Sorry, anyone wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Any other questions, comments, motion?
Motion to approve 1180. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Suzanne?
Carlson?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Rovetto?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, council. Item number 10, new business. We don't have any this evening. Moving on to item number 11, public comment on items not on the agenda. We don't have anyone signed up, but we do have folks in the audience. I don't know if, is anyone that wants to come up? No? Okay, we'll move on to reports. Under the mayor's report, there are no items to announce or no events to announce in the upcoming couple of weeks. And I have nothing else. Counsel? No? Okay. Erin?
I have nothing, Your Honor.
Okay. I thought, just in case you change your mind?
Mr. Mayor Protem, I wanted to ask Erin if she could give us any update on, on the state's actions relevant to Amendment 64. Where are they now in terms of dealing with retail sale, excise tax vote? Nothing?
There, there isn't anything to show yet, but the, the committee has been assigned. And that, the names of those individuals are available. But other than that, I haven't received any report. And CML is very good about keeping us up to date on that.
I have not seen anything in CML.
Thank you.
Okay. David?
We have nothing to report this evening.
Okay. Moving on to comments on written correspondence. I do not have any this evening. And there's no other comments from council? With that, it's 7:45, and we'll close the January 3rd meeting.
Good job!
Nice, yeah.